Canada is in the midst of a housing affordability crisis, and Calgary City Council recently voted against taking action on the issue. In doing so, they rejected the recommendations provided to them by an expert task force they created to study the problem, as well as rejected the prevailing wisdom at the national level, where the Canada Mortgage Housing Corporation has been screaming from the rooftops that the solution to the problem is to increase housing supply. Today, I'm going to be walking you through exactly how Calgary City Council arrived at their decision and give you practical information to take away as the subject of affordable housing returns to city council for public debate on September 14th. Let's talk about it. Let's begin with a very basic, brief review of supply and demand. As a product is introduced to the marketplace and as consumer interest in that product grows, its price will rise so long as it remains a scarce commodity. High prices incentivize producers to introduce more of that product into the marketplace, and as scarcity drops, the price that you have to pay as a customer will also drop. Although you won't find many contrarians to this basic macroeconomic principle, the real question is when we move outside the ivory tower. Does basic supply and demand apply to the housing market? There's presently high demand for housing across major Canadian cities, while supply has been relatively slow to keep up for a variety of reasons, like increasing materials and construction costs, regulatory hurdles, low interest rates, and human migration. In short, renters and homeowners are entering into bidding wars and competing amongst one another to access the limited supply of housing. At the same time, not enough housing is being introduced into the marketplace to stop prices from skyrocketing out of reach. How is this marketplace shortage affecting Calgarians? Well, I can speak from personal experience that my rent increased last year by 15%. And this figure is consistent when it comes to other renters renegotiating contracts with their landlords or those looking to rent a newly refurbished unit. What about if you're a young family or a working professional looking to purchase your first home? Unless you earn over $86,000 as an individual, which is 5% of Calgary wage earners, you only have access to 39% of the available housing stock. That's 95% of average Calgary wage earners competing over 39% of the available housing supply. So that's folks who can't afford to purchase a home in Calgary today. But let's just say for a moment they can live with their parents or stay renters for a few more years, or decades for that matter, to save enough for a down payment. How about those who currently can't afford their monthly rent and mortgage payments? There are over 81,000 households across Calgary who earn less than $60,000 and spend more than 30% of their take-home income on housing, which is Calgary's two-pronged test to determine if you are in need of non-market housing. Only 3.6% of Calgary's entire housing stock is non-market, which is half the national average and has left us in a deficit, where we need to find a way to make 2,500 housing units materialize every year, just to keep up with demand. And for those of you who don't believe that the municipal government has a duty of care to Calgarians struggling at this moment, or simply think that I'm a bleeding heart, let me talk about the cold economic costs of housing and affordability. Home Space Society found that the average unhoused Calgaryan costs the city $34,000 per year when it comes to ER trips, emergency shelters, and through our court system. Calgary Homeless Foundation further found that every dollar invested into housing has an ROI of $1.17 to $2.84, and the city can expect to save $105 million annually if they invest in housing. Regardless of market or non-market housing, Canada as a whole needs to build more housing supply as the problem is only anticipated to get worse over time. Alberta specifically needs to build an additional 20,000 units of housing by 2030 beyond what is currently projected in order to keep up with population growth, as well as keep costs affordable for the people living here. How affordable exactly? Well, if we can reach this 20,000 target, then the CMHC predicts that your personal housing expenses will fall to 30% of your take-home income. So compare that with how much you currently spend on rent or a mortgage, and that's the proverbial carrot to increasing housing supply. At the end of the day, logic should hold that increasing housing supply, either through new developments or increasing neighborhood density, should make a meaningful impact on affordability. In 2021, 95% of respondents to the Calgary Citizen Satisfaction Survey indicated that they saw affordable housing as the top priority for our municipal government to invest into. Last year, city council approved the construction of a housing and affordability task force to better understand the problem in the local context. And just this past June, they had the opportunity to pass through a series of measures that would have increased the amount of housing supply, both market and non-market, as well as lowered our carbon footprint and provided greater opportunities for indigenous and equity-deserving populations to achieve housing here in the city. The Housing Affordability Task Force quickly gained a wide array of endorsements across both for-profit and social services sectors, including support from Attainable Homes Calgary, Avison Young, Calgary Economic Development, Calgary Housing Company, Housing Assessment Resource Tools Project, the Centre for Newcomers, Certus Developments Inc., Calgary Inner City Builders Association, Civic Works, Home Space Society, Horizon Plus Forward Housing, In From the Cold, Intelligent Futures, Liberty Housing Organisation, MTA Marshall Tidymore Architects, NAIOPE, NOR Architects Engineers Planners, Potential Place Society, Round Square, Truman Homes, and Vibrant Communities Calgary. But when it was ultimately called to a vote...
Could you display the results, please? Motion's defeated, seven to eight, with councillor Shabow, McLean, Putmans, Wynes, Wong, Sharp, Demong, and Chu voting against.
Like many of you, when I first heard the results of this vote, I was some combination of devastated on one hand and confused on the other. I mean, this was an opportunity for Calgary City Council to demonstrate leadership and to actually get ahead of the problem. And even more than that, to actually maybe live up to our reputation as the "seventh most livable" city in the world. But instead, we didn't, and I struggled for a long time trying to figure out exactly why this result came out, but ultimately I tied it back to two primary reasons. The first is that certain councillors didn't want to increase density in their neighbourhoods. And second is that some councillors didn't even know what they were voting for on June 6th. Let me explain. One year ago, in June 2022, Wardate councillor Courtney Walcott sponsored a notice of motion to begin formal work on studying how Calgary's municipal government might address the housing crisis.
The reason why I bring this motion forward is really to help understand the municipal role in what we do. When with regard to housing, our role sits within zoning. It sits within our land sale policies. It sits within our incentives and levies. It sits within our own surplus land, and of course, it sits within our budget.
As a result, a housing and affordability task force was assembled, bringing land developers, nonprofit and affordable housing providers, emergency shelters, academic researchers, and city administration into the same room. Together, this group worked on the problem for seven months before providing advanced copies to council and publishing the report alongside a press release for the general public on May 4th, 2023. Based on the contents of the report, I organized the individual action items into two tables, all of which can be expanded upon on the City of Calgary website, link in the description below. I organized the 35 actions by urgency and by cost, while the color coding links specific action items to their intended outcomes. I will only be going over the most contentious points, and so I strongly urge you to pause the video, go over the recommendations, and identify the ones that are relevant to your individual household circumstances, either as a renter or as a homeowner. Remember, five directors and managers within city administration signed off on these actions as feasible. The city has the means to follow through on each of these items if city council approves them to do so. This was how the meeting was initially framed at the start of the June 6 session.
This is step two of a multi-step process, and I will speak a little bit more about the recommendations on the next slide. But council today is being asked to acknowledge the task force's recommendations as being the right ones to pursue to help address our city's housing and housing affordability issues, and to direct council to begin a careful process of implementation, including returning to council for further decisions. Next slide, please. So should council approve these recommendations today from administration? Administration would begin a careful implementation of the task force's recommendation. And that implementation would broadly fall into three different categories. The first is work that can be done within existing resources. So an example of this would be the recommendations from the task force that relate to advocacy, or the change processes, for example, around the non-market housing land sale that are changes to the way that we work with providers. The second category is recommendations that are a financial request. So for example, the proposal to allocate annual funding to a housing land fund. These recommendations would be forwarded into the 2024 budget adjustment process and would be forwarded to the executive committee item Strategic Discussion on and Delivering on Plans and Budgets. Council is not being asked to decide on those financial recommendations today and would instead be able to weigh them against other financial proposals coming forward. The third and final category is recommendations that require further implementation work, potential public hearings, and subsequent council decisions. Examples of this include the recommendations where there is a change or the creation of a bylaw and the recommendations related to property tax exemptions. For those recommendations, administration would begin the process of implementation, which includes assessing risks, doing option analysis, and may include a public hearing before returning to council. If the recommendations were approved, administration would go away, would do all of the work around the preparation work, research, impact analysis, and drafting of bylaws if that's necessary, take that back to a public hearing and a subsequent decision of council. So for all those recommendations that have a star on them, those recommendations would be coming back to council. It would not be a preconceived or a preordained thing. It would be coming back to council for a decision at that time.
So everyone present at that meeting should have been crystal clear about what they were voting on, how it would be implemented, as well as further future opportunities for public consultation, council debate, and voting. Moving past process, let's dive into the substance of the recommendations, starting with RCG rezoning. The task force set a target based on CMHC recommendations, as well as our local municipal development plan to grow Calgary's local housing supply by 1,000 more market homes and 3,000 more non-market homes annually. Calgary's Land Use Bylaw controls how land and buildings may be developed within the city, and so the task force therefore decided to focus their attention on this bylaw, which directly impacts just how dense housing in residential districts can be. Both Toronto and Edmonton city councils recently passed measures to this effect, and it has been proven to materially reduce housing costs in Auckland, New Zealand, which was used as an analogous market compared to Calgary during the session. Here, the default in suburban communities is RC1, or single-detached homes, which makes up 67% of all residential parcels. Only 13% allow for three or more units to be built. The unique aspect to the task force recommendations to increasing density across Calgary neighbourhoods is fundamentally tied to this idea that much of this growth needs to happen in long-term, grade-oriented housing. RCG is a residential district here in the city which allows for the construction of row houses, townhouses, duplexes, and other forms of housing which all maintain ground access, which is what grade-oriented means. So we're not talking about multi-story high-rise apartments here. And in theory, this should allow developers to better build density into neighbourhoods where that demand exists and lower our carbon footprint when it comes to the construction of these communities, as well as the cost of living in these homes. If you take one thing away from this video, I hope it's a better understanding of what exactly RCG means. So I'll leave it to Calgary's city and regional director to explain what this concept is all about, and then we'll unpack it a little bit further later on.
One of the things we've seen in the growth plans of a lot of cities that have struggled with affordability is they've relied very, very heavily on notes and corridors in downtown, which are almost all proportionally apartment dwellings. When we know that there's still, and will continue to be, across Canada and not just Calgary, lots of demand for ground-oriented housing. And so the RCG recommendation, the HCO recommendation, are centered on being able to provide that supply. And what you see in other markets is when you don't facilitate that ground-oriented housing in communities where people want to live, the ground-oriented housing that is available is extremely scarce, and you see an extreme escalation in prices. That's what you see in Toronto, Vancouver, and many cities. The overall likelihood of, in the established area or the inner city, of any given parcel turning over in a year is about 1%. We see about 1% turnover rate. But it's largely on parcels of those that exhibit those characteristics. So on the high-end case, Killarney, that's an older, pre-1960, well, very old community on a grid with a regular 50-foot lot configuration with lanes close to downtown. It's one of those areas that's most attractive to see this type of redevelopment, and that has been our experience. On the other end of the spectrum, two cases. Upper Mall Royal is a good example where it is a very old community, but its land and home quality is extremely high. It also has unusual lot shapes, and it doesn't have the characteristics. There's very good reason why we have not seen developer, builder, initiated rezonings for RCG in these neighbourhoods. It's very rare that someone would tear down a $3 or $4 million property to build this type of product. Similarly, in post-war suburbs further out, Citadel is the example here, where it doesn't exhibit a lot of the characteristics that make it likely that you would see a lot of redevelopment. It's not to say it can't happen, but it's less likely, at least now. So these are, you know, 1990s communities. They exhibit characteristics like pie lot shapes. It's almost exclusively front-access driveway. It's relatively far from demand drivers like downtown. Again, even with a rezoning, it'll take a long period of time before we start to see a high rate of turnover in these communities. But I think the benefit of this proposal is that even though the impact or the effect locally on any given street is low, even at 1%, on a typical 30-block unit, you're likely to see one redevelopment every three years. So low impact at the local scale, but because it's so widespread, the aggregate impact, the collective impact in terms of the overall housing supply is big. And that's what's, I think, attractive and beneficial about this proposal, is it unfetters the market and allows it to emerge and provide a pretty high degree of supply of relatively affordable housing.
So there are a variety of factors controlling exactly how this change will affect individual communities. And the reality is that inner-city neighbourhoods will experience more of this change compared to suburban communities. But over the long term, Calgary as a whole will experience increased density, but only in ways that are contextual to their neighbourhood. What does contextual look like in practice?
It seems an opportune time to talk about that question of compatibility, because it is the undercurrent of what we hear a lot from your questions, what we hear for development permit processes and through community feedback. And so wanted to just walk through, I decided to jump on my bike in my neighbourhood a couple of weeks ago and take some photographs of what we're actually talking about here, because I think it's important to perhaps demystify what this is actually about and what the characteristics of compatibility are in community character. So what we really are talking about here is homes. They're homes that are slightly more intense and more low-rise. But in our view, as Ms Khan said, we believe they're fundamentally compatible to the built form of all residential communities in Calgary. So this is a typical infill residential street within the community of Mount Pleasant in Ward 7. I'll point out, a community where you've seen a high degree of RC2 infill, duplex, as well as RCG. And if you click once, it'll demonstrate that the form and height and scale and compatibility of an RC2, which in this instance is side-lotting onto the street, and RCG is quite similar, in fact. Next slide. And again, if you click through one more time, an example of RCG as homes fitting into the community. They are low-rise, low-scale, and fundamentally more similar than different than the forms that are around them. Next slide. And so here's another example of one unit in-lotting, and then turning the corner, other homes facing the street. This is 24th Avenue Northwest. And so if you click one more time, you see that the scale, the height, the form of the RCG is similar, if not identical, to the RC2 districts around it. Highly compatible. Next slide. Similarly, if you look at communities front-on mid-block, if you click through one more time, you can see that on the left, you have an RCG form, the two end units, in this instance, it's a seven-unit RCG development that wraps the corner. But as it meets its neighbouring properties, it's the same height, scale, character of the homes around it, and it's a large part to do with those contextual rules that we have. Next. And so what we often hear about community change is there's a change in scale from old to new. But that's also been true throughout the entire evolution of infill development in Calgary. As we rezoned large portions of the inner city to RC2, you see the scale of a transition. So if you click one more time, you can see on the left is a very typical new RC2 duplex. It's of a bigger scale than the RC2-zoned, single, original home. So there is, over time, a transition in scale. That has been true for the last 40 years, and it wouldn't change as a result of this proposed action. Next. We also see that it's not just duplexes that have the scale of change. Actually, the highest percentage of housing replacement is from single to single. Over the last 20 years, approximately 20% of the homes that have turned over have gone from RC1 to RC1. About 11% in RC2 have gone from single to duplex. So in terms of volume, the most replacement of housing that we see, even in RC1 and RC2 districts, is from old single to new single. So if you click the slide, both homes are singles. And so for the average person, even though the rules are slightly different, perhaps, if you're standing on the street, a new single that's large, its massing, its scale, its character is very, very similar to what you'd see if this were an RCG rowhouse development. It's just a large single. And so this is the type of character change that happens over time. And next slide. And so we hear a lot of people go, "Well, a lot of the concern with infill is that the scale of its massing is bigger, the back of the house overhangs my backyard." There's a difference between the original housing stock and the new housing stock, and that's very true. But if you click again, that's also true of singles going to singles. That's, both are single-detached homes, in this instance, the community of Briar Hill, near my home. And so that scale and transition is similar. And then the last RC1 example, similarly, pocketed, if you go to the next slide, Pocket of West Hillhurst, if you click through again. The single that's being replaced by a single is larger contextually than what's happening. You see that transition in scale. That's the evolution of community character over time. And then if you go to the final slide of this deck, again, RCG. Is this materially different in terms of scale and form and compatibility to all those other pictures I showed? We think not, and that's why we think it's fundamentally compatible as communities begin to transition. The benefit of this, of course, is that these are worth $585,000, not 1.6 million, like a lot of those pictures I described before. And that will improve the affordability, which is the mandate of this committee.
With all of that said, this is my best, good-faith approach to understanding the argument against RCG rezoning. Changing the base designation to RCG will lower the barriers to constructing townhouses, rowhouses, duplexes, and secondary suites on residential properties. One argument against this change is tied to the idea of a community's culture, which can amount to anything from overcrowding and traffic congestion to the visual aesthetic of the community or maintaining historical continuity as a snapshot in time preserving how homes used to be built back in the day. The pejorative name for this concern is something you've probably heard in spades by this point, "not in my backyard," or "nimbyism" for short. The second argument is that increasing the housing supply will lead to greater marketplace volatility. The fear among existing homeowners is that as more and more single-family units are converted into higher-density housing, the value of their property will begin to decline in relation to the perceived lower value of higher-density housing. Not only that, critics pointed the idea that lowered property values means lower tax revenue for the city, which means potential budgetary shortfalls and a decline in city services. Here's the task force's response to concerns about rezoning affecting property values.
All the research indicates, and it's intuitive from just a supply-demand point of view, that increasing supply means that the same number of people are competing for more units, which reduces scarcity and puts downward pressure on prices.
But if you're a firm believer in RC1 or nothing at all, be aware that there are real material consequences to communities who choose not to increase density.
We've seen that population curve over time. There's usually a dramatic increase during the build-out of the community, and as that community starts, and there's a lot of family formation, in other words, a lot of children in that community, and then typically, over time, that population declines and stabilizes. And then eventually, when homes are ready for redevelopment, that population can recover. But it's only recovering in communities where we're enabling this type of intensification. So for example, in RC2 communities, we've seen population recovery. And we've seen population recovery at a higher rate amongst youths than the overall population. In RC1 communities, we've seen a continued decline of that population and an even larger decline in the proportion of people that are youths. So that has a lot of impacts in terms of community lifecycle. So impacts around school closures. And so the school boards look very closely at the demographic trends and where those are going. And so we see a lot of pressure on school closures in those areas that have lost population generally, but specifically where you've lost population amongst under-18 populations.
So that's RCG rezoning. The other major point of concern by councillors was the recommendation to remove parking minimums. The present Land Use Bylaw states that row houses, townhouses, duplexes, semi-detached, and cottage housing all need a minimum one parking spot per housing unit. This means that valuable space and money must be dedicated to constructing parking spaces for private motor vehicles. Removing these minimums would again eliminate administrative red tape and allow developers and homeowners the choice to building parking that suits the needs of the people living there. Now, the immediate concern by councillors was the risk of increased street congestion. So here's the task force's response.
So what you see on the screen here is a figure-ground image of West Hillhurst, and the red indicates the spaces within the community that are dedicated to car parking. So what's available for residential parking. So this is a community that has seen historically a lot of infill through RC2 redevelopment, as well as has been on a bit of the leading edge in terms of developer-led applications for RCG. So a pretty high rate of turnover. So on a typical block here, you have about 36 to 38 dwelling units on a full block. And amongst those, you have enough parking for 140 vehicles. So there's about a ratio of about three point, there's enough space for about 3.5 cars per dwelling unit in this community across. So roughly about 1,000 units in this picture, and over 3,600 parking spaces both on and off-street. So we feel that there's a relative abundance. If every single person in this picture did not park in their garage, and we took the average number of cars per dwelling unit across Calgary, there would still be enough space on-street to facilitate every single vehicle.
And to add my own commentary on this point, this is essentially the task force saying that city administration has overstepped its boundaries, and it should take a step back and allow communities to develop their neighbourhoods in ways that make sense according to what the needs of the people who actually live in those communities are. This isn't going to take away your ability to have a three-door garage or as many luxury vehicles as you can afford, nor does it mean that there's going to be increased congestion or a lack of street parking. There's plenty of space in Calgary for private automobiles. The difference here is that we're placing the power back into the hands of homeowners and land developers who can choose for themselves based on marketplace demand whether there's a need for parking and implement it accordingly, rather than having the city arbitrarily come in and say, "You must have this many parking spaces because we say so." Despite the logic behind RCG rezoning and the removal of parking minimums, council members push back during debate.
Well, we haven't taken, we've taken recommendations, but we haven't put it through an administrative process to determine whether or not we can, can't, should, shouldn't, and how prioritized-wise it affects everything else we do here. The other concern I have about some of the recommendations, again, is we have a public hearing process in there. And a public hearing process, if we make them automatically all one blanket omnibus motion to make them all RCG, then any future use changes will not be debated in the council.
And I think that the work we have would be far better used as part of a public education program. It demystifies me to this moment that we're starting with the end result, deciding on something, then going to the public to consult. I just don't understand this process.
I have no problem with RCG. I think it's a great zoning. But it still misses the mark when we have to... I think it's a great zoning, but it still misses the mark when we have to build high-rise apartments. We, we need Memorial to be denser than it is. We need our urban centers to be denser than they are. And so it feels like we, we didn't balance our problem with where we really need to put density. We also need to bring Calgarians along. There's been so many times this council has done this, and the biggest comment and the continued reach-up trust for Calgarians is that they're not brought along. This is close, but I think we needed more conversation and more robust conversation to solve a crisis that is a Canadian crisis. It's not one city, it's not one municipality. It's a Canadian crisis, because if someone sells out in the Vancouver market or the Toronto market, guess what? They're coming here and bidding up our price because they are used to another market. They don't know what the competition is here. And so that is why you're also seeing it go up.
I do have some concerns with a few of the recommendations in here. I'm a bit frustrated. We don't have a bit more of an opportunity to bait some of them on their merits individually. And I'm also a bit concerned, administration begins work on some of these immediately without a chance for us to really evaluate how this fits into our other priorities, like safety, transit safety. Unfortunately, this isn't the only crisis we face. We face many right now as a growing city. It's a lot what's sitting in front of us, and it's not about the money. And it's not disagreeing that we should do something, but it's a leap to think we should just accept the expert recommendations with no further debate on what it all means, on whether Calgarians support those recommendations.
We do know that a public process has to be undertaken before we can do even a city-initiated redesignation. And so what I envision that may happen if we move forward with all of these recommendations, including a blanket RCG, is that, is that we will get a lot of public submissions. So it could potentially be an extremely long public hearing that may end up with the result of us not approving it, just based on simply public pressure. My communities rallied against secondary suites, let alone going blanket RCG. This would be like secondary suites on steroids. I, I just, I, and there's absolutely no way that I could get convinced my communities to support that major of a change.
Here's Mayor Gondek addressing councillor concerns, as well as councillor Walcott's final appeal to the rest of council before the vote.
I've heard the same concern now from a number of members of council that you're worried about one specific piece of the recommendations that are before you. And you have every ability to debate that particular piece, that change to the land use. You have every opportunity to debate that and vote in the way that you feel is right as the updates come and as we go into a public hearing. We will have to go into public engagement in a public hearing. So you do have that opportunity to vote against something that you don't believe in. Today, what's been put before you by a group that we asked to take this on is a set of recommendations. And they are saying that these are the things that we need to do. These are frankly actions that we should have taken seven years ago when this was presented to council and it got shelved and ignored. So for the time that I've been on council, my question has been, why does housing not have a home? There's no department internally that looks at housing writ large. We have an affordable housing unit. There is no mandate for council to look at it through any committee. So this council added a mandate. This council is the first one to actually tackle housing. So here we have a set of recommendations that are allowing us to take back the responsibility that we've been shirking for a very long time. So if we are going to take these folks seriously, and if we're going to take economic development seriously, who says we will lose talent and we will lose businesses, then we have to show some action. This is only a starting point. This is a starting point, and there's more work to be done. The implementation plan will be presented to us. And I would remind you that we heard two important words today, crisis and trauma. It's a housing crisis and people will be in trauma if they can't live with dignity. The last time we heard those two words together, it was around mental health. It was around mental health, it was around addictions, it was around public transit. And we stepped up every time and made investments. So why can we do all of those things and yet we can't even take recommendations seriously around housing?
We have this like amazing opportunity in front of us, and if we don't act, I think this is what's really terrifying, is if we don't act, someone will force you to act. Right? Like we can, we can hide today, we can not do this, right? And we don't, you cannot act, but someone will force you to act because that's what's happened in every municipality that hasn't acted, that's hit the crisis. When Toronto didn't act, the province forced them to. In B.C., the provincial government has dropped a list of municipalities that say, "You're too expensive, figure it out." And if you don't figure it out, we'll come in and we'll strip you of your MGA powers and we'll do it for you. The federal government has tied federal funding toward this to the idea of missing middle housing, to the idea of densifying in your current areas. And the opposition in the federal government has threatened infrastructure dollars if you don't start doing this. And so I wrote about all of it. I even wrote one about the event center, about council values, a whole version on that one and how some of us will use the term virtue signaling. I wonder what virtues that signals that we will go the route of the event center but buck at, at these decisions which are completely within our jurisdiction.
When it was finally called to a vote.
You know, I will thank the task force for your time, since council clearly couldn't do that. Thank you for your time, thank you for your expertise. My apologies, it couldn't be done formally by the entire council.
Be aware that if you're a resident of Ward 4, 13 or 14, Shaun Chu, Dan McLean and Peter Demong all voted against the recommendations, which would be fine, they weren't the only ones, but they also contributed absolutely nothing to the discussion. They didn't ask a single question of the task force, they didn't engage in debate, and they also didn't voice their constituents' concerns. So if you live in those communities and you care about active representation in municipal politics, this is something to keep in mind. Following the vote, the backlash was almost immediate, with Calgarian citizens, news outlets and politicians of all stripes weighing in on the decision. Calgary City Council was presented with a series of recommendations to deliver more housing. It would have made it easier to build the homes that people need, but the gatekeepers stood their ground. It's disheartening to see that Calgary City Council rejected the Housing and Affordability Task Force's recommendations, which were well-thought-out and a step in the right direction. It's especially disappointing that eight councillors who supported a generous arena deal voted against these proposals. The issue of affordable housing is a nationwide concern, and the federal government is willing to collaborate with municipalities through our $4 billion Housing Accelerator Fund. However, we should not reward municipalities that aren't willing to come to the table. As someone who safely and happily lives in an apartment condo complex in north-central Calgary, surrounded by families of all different walks of life and backgrounds, I vehemently reject all nimby notions about multi-unit housing. I call on the federal government to stop rewarding councils that vote in favor of nimbyism, including Calgary City Council. And I call upon colleagues on that council, who I share constituents with, to buck up and be actual leaders and show our communities what courage and leadership looks like. One day later, council returned to session and councillor Pootmans, having experienced some change in heart over the course of the evening following the vote, introduced a vote to reconsider the previous day's work, with a few minor revisions that ultimately changed nothing of substance from the original motion the day before. The motion passed 14 to 1, with councillor Chu being the only one to vote against. Instead of scrapping all of the recommendations, city administration can now take action on them, which includes important work like advocating to the provincial and federal governments and approving city-owned lands for the construction of affordable housing. There is still time and there are plenty of opportunities for you as a member of the general Calgarian public to become involved in this process and to have your say when it comes to the future of affordable housing here in Calgary. Democracy did not die in darkness because council decided to change their mind on this vote, as councillor McLean so eloquently put it. The fact remains that housing and affordability is an incredibly complex process, and we can't get mired up in the details of chasing this unattainable perfect solution and sacrifice good enough, which is what council did on June 6th. I hope now you can start to see that this is a reasonable compromise and we can actually adapt some of these solutions and change them as we go along and we have checkpoints in place so that we can change what isn't working and continue to support what is. With that said, the Community Development Committee will be open to public consultation on September 14th, when the city's revised housing strategy will be presented to council. There are multiple ways to get involved at this meeting and comment on the task force's recommendations, from submitting letters to participating in person or calling in. If you're supportive but still skeptical about RCG or parking, demand transparency and pay attention to ongoing reviews of the program as it is rolled out. If you're passionate about other issues that were not addressed or have questions about how other recommendations are being implemented into the city's housing strategy, now is the time to ask those questions. Most importantly, make sure that your individual concerns are addressed and hold councillors accountable to both expert analysis and the entirety of their constituency, not just a select few. If you have a question or concern about something that I either talked about or didn't talk about today, feel free to email me or to leave a comment below. And hopefully we can get a bit of a dialogue going when it comes to answering some questions, providing resources, depending on your individual circumstances, and generally keeping momentum moving forward as we move into September. If you feel like this video had value to you, please, please, please like, comment, subscribe, share it with your network. It does genuinely mean a world of difference to small content creators like me. And hopefully I can get a bit more feedback and improve these videos in ways that reflect your needs as a member of this community. So my name is CJ, this has been my report to you, the shareholders, on the Calgarian housing crisis. I'm reporting from Treaty 7 territory. Thank you so much for watching, and until the next time, take care.